All right, we are going to have the swearing in of Doug Scott, our new police chief first. That way we can put the flags back and you can see us all after some pictures. So we're going to start with that. So Decker Plane, our city administrator, you have the floor.
Thank you, your honor. Welcome, everybody. We're here to swear in our new police chief Doug Scott. Doug has been with us for nineteen years. He has a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, a master's certificate in law enforcement from the University of Virginia, and is a recent graduate of the FBI National Academy. So he's well suited to be our next police chief. And our retired chief, Keith Kimble, is in the back in a T-shirt and pair of shorts. He's already gone into the retirement mode. So and then after the mayor swears in, Doug, his wife Heather will pin his badge on him. And then as the mayor indicated, we will start the meeting after we get the flags relocated and the chairs set back up. So with that, your honor, and chief.
Thank you, chief. Number four. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
All right. Ready?
Ready.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Doug Scott.
I, Doug Scott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of police chief.
Discharge all duties of police chief.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
I'll keep it short. I know we want to get the meeting going. This truly is an honor and privilege to be in here tonight. I'm very humbled by the outpouring of support that I've received. I was fortunate enough last week to get a picture with three of prior Bettendorf police chiefs. As I stand here tonight, I really do stand on the shoulders of giants. I can't express in words the gratitude that I have for all those that have stood with me, supported me through good times, through tough times, helped me understand how to fail forward, how to lead, how to be led, helped me understand the importance of offering grace, of having empathy and forgiveness, as we're all just humans, learning how to be in this life. I promise to this great community, to the city, to the honorable men and women of the department, that when it's my time to vacate this seat, that I'll have done the best that I could and that I will have built and spent time nurturing relationships, improved safety. I will have done the best that I could while I was here. I'm very grateful to my wife, my family, for their unconditional support. I'd like to thank Mr. Plane, Mr. Mayor, all the council that's spread out here for this opportunity, for your trusting in me, giving me this chance. This, this public safety community here in the Quad Cities is very unique and it's not like any other place. The amount of support, teamwork, vision that everybody has, regardless of geographical boundaries, regardless of patches, is really something astonishing and special. I'm very proud to be a part of that, and I look forward to serving each and every one of you. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move the flags and council, department heads. Everybody can take your seats. We'll get ready here for a roll call and a quick couple things before we get started with the meat of the meeting.
Yeah.
Shouldn't there be cookies and juice?
That's for donating blood.
There are, there are. You just said there'd be cookies and juice.
She's great. Cracking a beer. She's getting, obviously, she's halfway through her radiation, but the skin irritation is, you know, about to be expected, right?
I think we're still live.
Thank you, sir. How about yourself? All right. So thank you very much. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Jager.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Noman.
Here.
Sexer.
Here.
Baden.
Here.
Palczynski.
Thanks for joining us, Nick, and everybody else who's here in person. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing for the invocation, which tonight will be given by Alan Ross, the executive director of the Jewish Federation of the Quad Cities.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alan? Please remain standing.
Prayer for our country. Let us pray. Our God and God of our ancestors, with mercy accept our prayer on behalf of our country and its government. Pour out your blessing upon this land, upon its inhabitants, upon its leaders, its judges, officers, and officials, who faithfully devote themselves to the needs of the public. Help them understand the rules of justice you have decreed, so that peace and security, happiness and freedom will never depart from our land. I don't know, I, God whose spirit is in all creatures, we pray that your spirit be awakened within all the inhabitants of our land. Uproot from our hearts hatred and malice, jealousy and strife. Plant love and companionship, peace and friendship among the many peoples and faiths who dwell in our nation. Grant us the knowledge to judge justly, the wisdom to act with compassion, and the understanding and courage to root out poverty from our land. May it be your will that our land be a blessing to all who dwell on earth. May you cause all peoples to dwell in friendship and freedom, speedily fulfill the vision of your prophets. Nation shall not lift up sword against nation, neither shall they learn war anymore. For all of them, from the least of them to the greatest, shall know me, and let us say amen.
Amen.
Mr. Ross, we appreciate you being here. We've moved past the swearing in, so we will start our six proclamations. For these, we'll meet in the center of the room. And the first one is for Mental Health Month, May 2025. This proclamation was requested by the Quad City Open Network. It'll be received by Nicole Karkner, the executive director of the Quad City Health Initiative. Nicole, you know where to go. I'll meet you there.
Thank you very much for being here, as always.
Thank you.
All right. So our proclamation for Mental Health Week from the office of the mayor. Whereas mental health is essential to our physical health and the overall health of our community, and whereas last year, the Community Health Assessment report that nearly a quarter of the Quad citizens are, noted that nearly a quarter of the Quad citizens are receiving treatment for a mental health condition, and whereas in June of 2022, the FCC launched the 988 initiative to replace the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline in an effort to make it easier for people to access a lifeline anywhere. And whereas the Quad Cities Behavioral Coalition is working to share this message and to educate the public on the resources available to positively impact the behavioral health of the Quad Cities, more information can be found at QCBHC for Quad City Behavioral Health Coalition dot Weebly dot com. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Month in our community, and I encourage all our citizens to promote the ongoing education on the importance of prioritizing mental health and reaching out to get connected to services if a mental health crisis arises.
Here, mayor.
Mayor, your honor. Nicole, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Please share your thoughts, if you'd like to, about the work we're doing in the community.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, mayor. Thank you so much to all of the council members and staff who have supported this work for many years now in the Quad Cities area. It's so important for us to talk about this topic of mental health and to have folks in our community who are not just representing the healthcare sector talk about this issue. And that's why this proclamation is so meaningful for us tonight. It's hard to believe we're back in May again, but May does give us an opportunity to shine a light on this issue, even though it is important all year long. And many of the statements included in the proclamation are ones that I would encourage folks to look into, the 988 resource, the Community Health Assessment work that we do, and the many, many organizations that are part of the Quad City Behavioral Health Coalition. I was looking at some of the comments for this year's Mental Health Awareness Month, and they were emphasizing how important our mental health is to our physical health. And I think that's just a great reminder, and it's wonderful for us also to see all the ways in which the city of Bettendorf promotes physical health. We also partner closely with you on promoting trail use and outdoor physical activity, and so that's a wonderful addition. And also just thinking about the value of community and connections and relationships in community and how that fosters the sense of well-being. And every time I come to one of these council meetings, I am reminded of that and reminded of seeing that in action, how important that is. So thank you for all that you do and for all the services that you provide to the city and to the larger Quad City area.
Thank you.
You look great. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three. Thank you. I'm sure she's got some special skills.
Thanks, Nicole. The next proclamation is for National Small Business Week, which is May 4th through the 10th. This proclamation was requested by Jacob Foote, the Government Affairs Manager at the Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce. It'll be received by Jacob and Kate Terrell. Am I saying that right, Kate of Wallace's? Is she here?
Yes.
Oh, awesome. Come on up, Kate. I think I'll recognize you when I see you, but I didn't know exactly. How are you?
I'm not covered in dirt.
Yes. Thank you both for being here. Come on up, please. All right. I do have a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas America's spirit of innovation thrives from the corner stores that define our neighborhoods to the cutting-edge startups driving progress. Small businesses are the very foundation of our economic strength and the embodiment of the American dream. And whereas sporting, supporting these small businesses in the city of Bettendorf fosters job creation and safeguards to the unique character of our community. And whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week each year since nineteen, excuse me, yeah, 1963, highlighting the valuable programs and services offered by the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies to empower entrepreneurs. And whereas the city of Bettendorf proudly joins this national effort. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as National Small Business Week in the Bettendorf community, and I encourage everyone to join this national effort in supporting our local small businesses to ensure continued vibrancy of this community.
Here, here.
Here, your honor. Congratulations. Thanks for being here. What would you like to say? You have the floor.
Hi. They told me to keep it short, which is, I'm not, I'm not good at that. But my name is Kate Terrell. I am what I like to say the current steward of Wallace's Garden Center, which was started back in the 50s and 60s by Warren Wallace and then purchased by my dad, Doug Nelson, in 1981, where he ran it for 40 years, grew it to what it is today, and then I was fortunate enough to take over from him in 2021. So Wallace's has really grown up with Bettendorf. We were originally way outside of town, a gravel road, and just kind of out in the country. And I think, you know, it's so nice to be a part of a community and part of multiple generations of Bettendorf citizens that have memories of Wallace's. And I'm going to tell a story from the other day. Nancy Von Mar was shopping in the greenhouse, and I was helping her get her plants. And she told me the story of when she was young and just married, and she came to Wallace's and bought $63 worth of flowers from Warren Wallace. And she was so worried that her husband was going to be very mad when she got home because she had bought all these flowers. And, and then she told me that she sure wished she could get out of there spending only $62 on her flowers. So, and that is, you know, 60, 50, 60 years later, and we still have customers that have been patronizing Wallace's forever. So it's a testament to Bettendorf and their support of small businesses. We have so many great businesses. Ninety-nine percent or more of businesses in Iowa and in the country are small businesses. So, you know, we employ your friends and neighbors, your family. We give your high school kids their first jobs. You know, we sponsor Run With Carl and your sports events and your fundraisers. And it's really special for us to be able to be a part of the community and to see people come and shop and run into their friends and neighbors. And it's just, it's a really awesome thing that we've built, and it's really nice to be part of Bettendorf and the Quad Cities greater area. The small businesses really are, I like to say, the fingerprints of our community. It's what makes us unique from everywhere else. And so I appreciate city council and your support for small business and everybody, shop local.
Jacob, what do we have in the chamber? Do you have anything to add, sir?
I will leave it largely to what she said, but we appreciate Bettendorf's support for small businesses and we look forward to working with you.
Fantastic. Come on up here for a picture.
Ready? One, two, three, one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Our next proclamation is for School Nurse Day, May 7th. This proclamation was requested by Iowa School Nurse Organization and the Bettendorf Community School District. This will be received by Jordan Drain, the president of the Iowa School Nurse Association, Meredith Ortega, who is at Neil Armstrong, Emma McKinney at Middle School, Chelsea Groves at Hoover School, and Donna Carlson at Bettendorf High School. Ladies, come join me. All right. I have a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in a school setting, and whereas school nurses are professional nurses that serve the, on the front lines, understanding the link between health and learning and are able to make a positive difference, providing support for children every day, and have been ensuring students' academic success for more than 120 years. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children, and are members of the school-based terms, providing care coordination to address school populations. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 7th, as School Nurse Day in our community, and I encourage all of our citizens to celebrate our school nurses and express gratitude for all they do to keep our children safe and healthy all year long.
Here, here.
Well, thank you all for being here. Would somebody like to speak on behalf of the group? Jordan?
Sure.
Jordan?
Hello.
Jordan's not a loss for words, because he's the president.
Yeah. I'm Jordan Drain. I'm the president of the Iowa School Nurse Organization. Thank you, Mayor Gallagher, and the city of Bettendorf for having us back again this year. We're honored that you see the value in the role of the school nurse. I am a school nurse at Mark Twain Elementary, just up the way in Bettendorf. Honored to accept this proclamation today alongside my colleagues in Bettendorf. Unfortunately, our Pleasant Valley counterparts were unable to attend, but I would like to acknowledge the efforts that they do on a daily basis to keep kids safe, healthy, and ready to learn. It is National Nurses Week, so to all nurses in the city and the Quad Cities, thank you for what you do on a daily basis. School Nurse Day was originally established to recognize the work of the school nurse in the education setting. So some people might not recognize the value and the scope of all the things we see on a daily basis. School nurses are more than Band-Aids and ice packs. We're a listening ear. We're a care coordinator. We're helpers.
You're more today.
Thank you.
You know?
Yes. More today than ever. So most of our offices are revolving door almost all day, every day. So thank you again for recognizing National School Nurse Day tomorrow.
Fantastic.
You want to be in the middle?
No, no. You guys, come on the end.
Pretend like you like each other, squeeze in. Come on in.
All right. Call Garth, I'm coming in.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
I should have asked. I get one of mine too. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Sorry.
That's all public anyway.
Two, three, one more. One, two, three. Very good.
Thank you all. Do we have somebody here from Bettendorf Healthcare? The person who is going to accept this has a sick child, and I will be there Monday for an ice cream social for National Skilled Nursing Care Week. So I will deliver this proclamation on Monday.
Here, here.
We only have six. So we'll move to River Cleanup Day, May 17th, 2025. This proclamation was requested by Iman Consulting LLC and Clean River Advisory Council. This will be received today by Brianna Collier, CFO, Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce. And do we have somebody here from the Clean River Advisory Council? All right. Bree, nice to see you. All right. We do have a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas since 1973, the United States has observed National River Cleanup Day of action during May to promote river cleanups, and as a result, over 1.3 million volunteers have participated, removing more than 17 million pounds of trash from U.S. rivers. And whereas the Quad Cities has unique geography as a bi-state region located along the banks of the Mississippi River, which is a vital source of drinking water, an important habitat for wildlife and plants, and a recreational and economic amenity. And whereas in 2023, the Walton Family Foundation, in partnership with Iman Consulting and the Quad Cities Community Foundation, formed the Clean River Advisory Council to inspire all community members to seek and to create a more inclusive conservation community, bring awareness to its Mississippi River equity vision, and to highlight the importance of a zero pollutant mindset. And whereas the proactive members taken by the city of Bettendorf recognize the importance of the Mississippi River, and we are committed to highlighting the importance of zero pollution mindsets. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 17th as River Cleanup Day in the city of Bettendorf and commend its observation to all citizens.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Bree? Welcome. I know you like this thing.
Yes, mayor, members of council and staff, thank you so much for being such great collaborative partners with the Clean River Advisory Council. It is a bi-state effort. It is a group of citizens, Quad citizens, that really want to make sure that our river has the clean drinking water that you mentioned. It plays such an important role, not only in our day-to-day lives, but also in the recreation that we have. Thank you to the city of Bettendorf, along with our other cities, both Iowa and Illinois, for supporting the Clean River Advisory Council, for declaring the 17th the Clean River Day, and we appreciate all the support and all the pride.
Thank you. All right, Brian. Our next proclamation, and last of the evening, sorry, city council, is for Public Works Day, which is May 17th, 2025, and Public Works Week, May 18th through the 2020, excuse me, through the 24th, 2025. This proclamation was requested by Bettendorf Public Works and is received tonight by our Public Works Director, Ryan Schmidt. Ryan, thank you for being here, sir. As always, appreciate your hard work. All right. We have a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed community is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as sewers, streets, solid waste collection, and the numerous other services provided by this department. And whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated staff is essential for our community to meet the standards of our citizens and to provide the highest quality of service that Bettendorf has the reputation for consistently providing. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 17th, 2025, as Public Works Day, and the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Public Works Week in our community, and I ask all of our citizens to acquaint themselves with our public works staff and operations, and to take great pride in the excellent city services provided by their outstanding work in public works.
Here, here.
Here, here, your honor. Ryan?
Thank you, your honor.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, council, for your continued support. Once again, we will be hosting Public Works Day on Saturday, May 17th, up at our Public Works facility behind the post office off of Devil's Glen, so please stop by and see all the fun events that we're going to be having. This is just a great opportunity for my staff and I to educate and energize the public of the importance of public works in their daily lives. This event just keeps on growing. It just seems like when I first started here, there was about 250 to 300 individuals that attended this, but last year, we actually had over 550 visitors at our Public Works facilities. It's a great event for family and friends, and please come out on Saturday, May 17th. We'll have numerous pieces of equipment out that on display. We'll have staff there to answer any questions. We'll also be serving free lunch, hamburgers, hot dogs, ice cream, popcorn, face painting for the kids, bounce houses, all different types of educational opportunities, and we're hoping to maybe see you on Saturday.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. All right. Thank you, council, for your indulgence. Lots of great proclamations this evening. Many people doing great work in our community, and it's nice to recognize those doing so. Oh, I have another proclamation. Hold on. Just kidding, Scott. All right. We do have public requests of council. It's now time, if you would like to be heard by council to make a request, you can do so now unless there's a public hearing on your issue already set for tonight's meeting. If you'd like to be heard at public requests of council, we'd like to hear from you. Please approach the podium in the back. Please limit your comments to a couple of minutes, and please give us your name and address before you begin to speak. Is there anyone here for public requests of council? All right. No movement. We're going to close public requests of council. Let's move to our first public hearing. Michelle, did we publish notice for the fiscal year 2025, application for federal transit administration funds, 5307?
Yes, we did, your honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
All right. Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Council's well informed on this, so I don't think- Council's well-informed on this, so I don't think any, unless anybody has questions for Brian before we open the public hearing? Okay. Let's open the public hearing with regard to the 5307 financial assistance for our federal transit program. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on this item? All right. We'll close that public hearing and move to the resolution. Councilmember Sexer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the fiscal year 2025 application for Federal Transit Administration Section 5307 Financial Assistance. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion? Yes, Greg Adamson, Councilmember Adamson.
My usual. I'm gonna vote for it because we, it's helpful for the community, but I, I'm, I'm hoping someday that there's a, a better system for public transportation than what, what's available today. That's it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Jager.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
All right, let's move to the public hearing with regard to the Gateway Pedestrian Bridge and Trails Phase 2 Project. We went through this a bit last night. Um, does anybody have any questions on this item before we open the public hearing?
Your Honor, just, just to clarify, um, because I think these two projects get confusing. Uh, I have requested, I've actually tabled the HDR project, which is on consent, but I didn't want anyone to get confused by, by this because they, they are so close together.
Okay. That's why I asked about questions, but it doesn't seem that we have any. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard, with regard to the Gateway Pedestrian Bridge and Trails Project Phase 2. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close that public hearing. Let's move to the resolution. Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the planned specifications in form of contract for the Gateway Pedestrian Bridge and Trails Phase 2 Project. I move approval of this resolution.
Do we have any discussion on this project? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Jager.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
All right. We move to a second reading of an ordinance. This is for Councilmember Baden, please.